Okay, everybody. Well, hello. It is 7:30, so. I'm hoping that everybody is safe and healthy and happy, and I'm glad to see all of our planning commissioners here tonight. Typically, our planning commission meetings would be started by the chair and Carol will take over very shortly. But I would just like to mention a few things about tonight's meeting from an operational standpoint. For those of you out there who don't know, my name is Dan Powers. I'm the Planning and Economic Development Director for the township. I just want to go over a few housekeeping and technical items about tonight's meeting. All attendees who are not part of the panelist screen will be muted. Until there are public comments solicited, there are multiple ways you can make a public comment. The recommended way is to use the raise hand function on your screen. We have moderators who can assist with that. There is also a chat function that can be used to chat a public comment and state your name and address. I will read your public comment out loud for the board to hear when it is the appropriate time. And if you use the first option, which is the hand raising, I'll introduce you and unmute your microphone so you can speak. So in either case, please say your name and address for the record, just as you would in a normal meeting. There's a third way, which I don't see that we have any people just calling in at this time, but there is a way that you can call into the meeting. Those instructions are also available on our agenda page. Similarly, if you call in and press star nine, that will raise your virtual hand. So we'll see that you're doing that and we'll ask you if you'd like to make a comment as well. There are no public hearing items on tonight's agenda, but there are some items that it's typical that the chair would solicit public comments if we see that there are people out there. So there are ways to make those comments. If you still have other questions, there is a step-by-step instruction sheet on how to join a Zoom meeting. That's on the agendas and minutes webpage of the planning commission's agendas and minutes website within the Van Buren Township overall website. So we will keep an eye on things. We have moderators who will help to navigate those attending the meeting, who may be wanting to make public comments, but otherwise the meeting will proceed as it normally does in terms of the speaking and the cadence and the format. So with no further ado, I will let our Chair Carol Thompson take it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan Powers. I appreciate helping everybody get situated and settled in. We'll start the Charter Township of Van Buren Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, May 27, 2020. And we'll have a roll call, please. Ms. Harmon, will you call the roll?
Brian Kelly.
Here.
Sherry Bud.
Sherry's here.
Medina Atchinson.
Here.
Jeff Jar.
Here.
Joan Fransway.
Here.
Donald Boynton.
Yeah.
Carol Thompson.
Here. Thank you very much. We have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. So moved.
Mr. Boynton, motion?
Support.
I'm sorry, I can't tell who said support. Say your name.
Brian, support.
Brian, support. So we have a motion and support. Any changes or corrections or additions to the agenda? All in favor of approving the agendas presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let me check with Director Powers. Do you want all votes to be roll call votes?
The Executive Order for Remote Meetings asks that action items should be roll call votes, just to make sure that the record is clear. So that would be preferred, yes.
All right, so we're fine on the approval of the agenda? Or you want to go back and do a roll call vote?
The approval, I'm sorry, the approval of the agenda is all set.
All right, and in a moment, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes. Does that need to be a roll call vote?
We might as well do that that way, yes.
Okay, just note to self. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of March 11, 2020?
Motion to approve.
That can.
A motion by Commissioner Jar, support by Commissioner Boynton. Any changes or corrections to the minutes? And I will ask Ms. Harmon to please do a roll call vote to approve the minutes of March 11.
Joan Fransway.
Yes.
Jeff Jar.
Yes.
Brian Kelly.
Yes.
Sherry Bud.
Yes.
Medina Atchinson.
Yes.
Donald Boynton.
Yes.
Carol Thompson.
Yes, thank you very much. We'll move right into the business for tonight. Under new business, our first item is Phantom Fireworks requesting a temporary land use. The applicant Phantom Fireworks requested temporary land use permit to conduct temporary outdoor fireworks tent sales. The location is 2095 Rossenville Road. The site is located in the Lakewood Shopping Plaza parking lot on the east side of Rossenville Road and on the south side of the I-94 Service Drive. As additional information, this activity is proposed from June 22 to July 5 of 2020. We'll start first with a presentation from the applicant, Mr. Tapper.
Hi, hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you, welcome. I appreciate you guys doing this virtually. It helps out. Again, I'm with Phantom Fireworks. My name is Richard Tapper. My address is 7376 Rafford Lane, West Boone Field, Michigan, 48322. Again, I'm the regional for the state of Michigan for Phantom. This is, I think, our ninth year that we're doing the tent in this location at Lakewood Shopping Center. I don't think we've had any instances over any of the years that we've been running the tent here for this Fourth of July season. We've taken a lot of precautions going into the season since it's different this year for the COVID-19. The state of Michigan has sent us some emails regarding some things that they want us to do and conduct throughout this season. As of now, if we opened up tomorrow, the location, the state of Michigan wants us to make sure we don't have more than 10 customers in the tent at a time. We have taken precautions. All our zone, all our operators will be wearing masks. We're going to be doing social distancing, marking off six feet on the asphalt with tape. We got signs asking customers to wear masks. We're going to have signs posted for the, regarding the social distancing. We also have a memo that we're giving to operators at training that to make sure their help is not sick. They are, don't come in and work. So we have all this, all these little things in play. We also will have signs at our entrances posted stating that there's maximum of 10 customers per tent. If somehow July comes and the governor increases it, that we can allow them, we'll make that change. But right now, we will allow more than 10 customers in the tent at a time.
Great, thanks very much. It's great to have all of that additional information on top of the application that you submitted. We'll have a review at this point by Director Best and then come back and see if there are any questions or comments. Director Best.
Thank you. Today, we're here to discuss the approval of a special land, or temporary land use for Phantom Fireworks. They are requesting a temporary land use permit for tent sale fireworks at Lakewood Shopping Plaza at 2095 Rossenville Road. This will be from June 22 to July 5, from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. Per the zoning ordinance, temporary uses that operate for more than seven consecutive days require planning commission approval. In reviewing past applications for this temporary land use, the current application and the requirements for the zoning ordinance for temporary use approval, the following comments are pertinent for the planning commission's consideration. The site does have adequate parking and access. There are 877 parking spaces at Lakewood, 31 of which are handicap reserved. The tent, the portable storage container and surrounding space will only remove 39 of the 877. So there are, there is adequate parking and access. Adequate drainage. The site is in an existing lot that already has a stormwater drainage system that is working properly. The tent and the storage containers should not impact that at all. It is compatible with the surrounding land uses. The proposed use is retail sales in a parking lot of an existing retail shopping plaza. The site height, size, height and type of construction of proposed structures in relationship to the surrounding site is compatible. The tent and storage containers are temporary in nature and tent sales regularly take place in parking lots, so no impacts are expected to the surrounding sites. There are sufficient setbacks from road right of ways and lot lines. The sales area setback 50 feet from the right of way and I-94 Service Drive and 30 feet from the adjoining outlots. There are adequate utilities. Phantom will supply its own electrical generation. The generator and electrical hookup will be inspected to ensure compliance with the National Fire Protection Association requirements. Trash disposal and site cleanups. Site cleanup is the responsibility of Phantom and their plan, along with working with the property owner Showstack Brothers, is sufficient to make sure that the site stays clean. Sanitary facilities. Due to the short nature of customary shopping, no sanitary facilities are planned to be provided. Hours of operation from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. Now, Van Buren Township's fireworks ordinance, which was adopted in 86, requires firework sales to conclude at 9 p.m. Act 256 preempts this requirement as there is no restriction on the hours of operations for other temporary uses. We are not aware of any complaints with Phantom's closing of 10 p.m. in the previous years, so the hours of operation we find are reasonable. Outdoor light and signs. There are no exterior lights provided. Interior lights will be hung by the tent company. The zoning ordinance permits one 32 square foot temporary sign for a period not to exceed 30 days. And Phantom has submitted their sign example with the packet of a banner to measure five by 16, which is 80 square feet. Phantom's temporary signage must comply with the zoning ordinance, and I believe it does. That may be, let me just. Let me just double check it real quick. They'll get a permit for the sign as they always do, so it'll be in compliance with the sign ordinance. Other licenses and permits required. A current consumer fireworks retail facility non-permanent license will be provided by the applicant in the packet before establishment of temporary use. And the fire marshal who will speak in a minute will separately be issuing a review letter, which I have in the packet here. Potential noise, odor, dust and glare. This temporary use should not increase noise, odor, dust or glare from its use. Fire lanes, fire protection and security. The Van Buren Fire Marshal will cover that in the, in his report. As, and I will also state that the staff, the site will be staffed by three to six employees during open hours. During non-operating hours, all products are returned to the fireproof storage unit and locked up until the materials are returned to display the following day. The roads in the immediate vicinity of the site are major township roads and this temporary use will not impact the flow or travel volumes. There is known necessity for a performance bond to ensure prompt removal. The property owner is responsible for ensuring the site is returned to its pre-sale condition. There are no additional concerns that would impact public health, safety or general welfare. According to my records, this is the eighth year that Phantom has operated this location. It may be nine, but I have eight. And I am not aware of any complaints or issues that have taken place in the previous years. Based on this review dated March 19, 2020, I recommend approval of this application subject to the following two conditions. One, that the applicant obtains approval from the Van Buren Township Fire Marshal, which he has a review letter here, but there also is an inspection the fire marshal will do once they set up, and that all proposed signage complies with the township's zoning ordinance. And with that, I'd be happy to answer, or actually, if the fire marshal would like to give his report and then we can take questions after that, that would be preferable. Dave, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, thanks, Matt. Again, everything you stated was correct. I mean, this is the ninth year. I think that he's done it. And they've always been on top of it. They have more than sufficient clearance. Their personnel is trained. And our inspections are very minimal because the state handles pretty much everything. So from the fire standpoint, when we show up there, they make fire job very easy because the state does pretty much the inspections for compliance. We just do our site inspection. So we're satisfied with what they've turned in. It follows the guidelines the township's requested.
You have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them, or Dave would be happy to answer them this time as well.
Great, thank you very much, gentlemen, both of you. Good job. Planning Commission discussion. So questions or comments from members of the planning commission? Planning Commissioner Boynton, do you have any questions?
No, not, 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 not with this location. Everything seems to be pretty much the way that they've done in years past. And that's, that's, I'm good with this one. I got a few questions on the Menards location, but this one here is good.
Okay, great. I know you usually do have a couple of questions. You review these carefully. So thank you, and we'll look forward to hearing your Menards questions in the next agenda item. Any other planning commissioners with comments or questions for staff or the applicant? No one at this time? All right then, Director Powers, I think we are wondering if we have any public comment at this point.
I see a few attendees who we already mentioned, and I see no hands raised and no chat questions. So there appear to be no public comments, although if anybody in the attendees list has anything to add or ask, please raise your hand. And I do see that Richard Tapper of Phantom Fireworks has a comment or question. So I'll just invite him to speak again. And I think you are, you are free to speak, Mr. Tapper.
Great, thank you. Just to let Dave know, if he wants to come and do his inspections when the state fire marshal is coming, I just sent the chat there. When our state fire marshal will be coming on Monday, June 22 to inspect our tents. And he will be at the Van Buren location on Rossenville Road around 11:30. And if we do get approved for the Menards location, he is going to be starting at the Menards location at 11 o'clock supposedly. And that's the state fire marshal, Mike McCormick.
Copy that, thank you.
Okay, good. So we have no public comment at this point. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? In that case, is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kelly.
I would move to grant Phantom Fireworks a temporary land use permit at the 2095 Rossenville Road location, based on the analysis and subject to the conditions in the Van Buren Staff Letter dated March 19, 2020, and the Van Buren Fire Department Letter dated May 21, 2020.
Great, is there support?
Madam Chair, I support Jar.
Thank you, Commissioner Jar. So we have motion and support, and this is a roll call vote, please, Ms. Harmon.
Sherry Bud.
Yes.
Medina Atchinson.
Yes.
Brian Kelly.
Yes.
Jeff Jar.
Yes.
Joan Fransway.
Yes.
Donald Boynton.
Yes.
Carol Thompson.
Yes, thank you very much. So the motion carries. And Mr. Tapper, looks like we have you up next. Our item number two under new business is also Phantom Fireworks, a temporary land use permit to conduct temporary outdoor fireworks tent sales. This location is 10010 Belleville Road. The site is located in the Menards parking lot, which is on the west side of Belleville Road and south of Tyler Road. And this activity is proposed from June 22 to complete on July 4 of 2020. So, Mr. Tapper, anything that you'd like to add specific to this site?
No. Do you want me to say my name and address again?
I think we've got it for the record.
I mean, the only thing with this site is, and we're doing this, we actually deal with Menards. We have some product inside their locations. And Phantom Fireworks puts a lot of tents in the Menards parking lots throughout other states. And we do a few here, and Menards wanted us to do a couple in Michigan, and I only chose to do one of them. It's just, just to deal with. So, so, so just to make things easy with people in our office and Menards, I chose to do one of them. And possibility with the Kmart closing over at Lakewood there, we may end up not doing that tent next year. Sales are real low, and hopefully you approve us at Menards. We'll just have one possibly next year. If we do good at both, we might keep them. But right now, because of, you know, the Lakewood Shopping Center going down, unfortunately, we might end up moving over that way.
Okay, thanks for explaining that. All of the COVID requirements by the state also apply at the Menards location. Is that correct?
Yep, everything's the same. I actually have training next Thursday and Friday with all the operators. And, and the ones that have been doing it for three or four years, we're doing a Zoom training. So, so these happen to be operators that are new in first years. They will be in-person training. Yes.
Okay, great. If, now there's nothing else from you right now, then we'll move on to the recommendation from staff, and that would again be Director Best.
Yes, thank you. We're to discuss the temporary land use for Phantom Fireworks at 110 Belleville, wait, 10010 Belleville Road. This use is proposed the same time as the other one, June 22 through July 4, from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. Per the zoning ordinance, temporary uses that operate more than seven days require planning commission approval. Most of these items are the same as what you've just previously heard. But I will briefly go over some of the slight differences. It does have adequate site parking. They have more than adequate public parking and more than adequate handicap parking. There is adequate drainage with the existing storm system. It is compatible with the surrounding land uses as a shopping, retail shopping area. The portable tent and container, the tent and portable storage container are temporary in nature, and there should be no impact to the surrounding sites due to hot size, height and type of construction or structure. There are sufficient setbacks from road right of ways and lot lines. The sales area setback more than 50 feet from Belleville and more than 30 feet from the adjoining property to the west. Or sorry, to the, shouldn't say west. I apologize. That should say to the south. Adequate utilities. Phantom will supply its own electric generation and will be inspected to make sure it meets NFPA. Trash will be the responsibility of Phantom in their agreement with Menards, the property owner. Sanitary facilities will not be provided due to the short time of customers being in the facility. Hours of operation is exactly the same as before, 10 to 10. Although our ordinance says they must conclude at 9, Act 256 preempts that without any restriction on hours of operations for other temporary uses. So there are no other complaints of Phantom closing at 10 o'clock at the other site. So we are willing to see how it goes at this location, following the track record of Phantom Fireworks in our community. Outdoor light and signs. There are no exterior lights. There will be interior lights. And the sign must meet the Van Buren Township zoning ordinance for sign requirements. There will be a permit obtained as always. Other licenses must be required, or that are required have been obtained. The commercial fireworks retail facility non-permanent license and the Van Buren Township's Fire Marshal will also issue a separate review letter, which they have, and it is in the packet. There should not be any noise, odor, dust or glare from the site. Fire protection will be spoken by the fire marshal. And the site will be staffed by three to six employees during open hours, and during non-hours, everything's locked up in the storage container. The roads in the immediate vicinity are major township roads, and the temporary use should not impact flow or travel. Although it may seem like that on Belleville Road every day, so. Necessity of performance bond to ensure prompt removal. The property owner will be responsible for making sure that this site will be returned to its pre-sale condition, so a bond is not being requested at this time. There are no additional concerns that are found. I'm going to probably make the moderators freak out here, but I'd like to just show everyone where this is going to go, just so that. And this is a first for Van Buren Township sharing a Zoom screen, so I didn't tell them I was going to do this, so we'll see what happens. This is the Menards facility here. And as you can see, this is the tent. And the storage containers located on the southern side of the property on some parking areas. The majority of traffic that goes in and out of the site utilizes this entrance and this entrance. And the cross traffic usually travels through this location. So all the places that they could have picked to house their location, this is the least used. This is their busy area over here for cars, because this is their drive-in lumberyard. So of the sites that they picked, they picked the least impacted, impactful area. So this kind of gives a feel for the site and shows you where it's at, so you guys have an idea, since it's the first time that they've placed a fireworks sale proposed here at this Menards location. And with that, this will be the first year that Phantom has operated, and I am not aware of any complaints that have taken place at Phantom Fireworks and the other location at Lakewood Shopping Center in the previous years. Based on the review dated May 11, 2020, I am recommending approval of this application subject to the following two conditions. That the applicant obtains approval from the Van Buren Township Fire Marshal and that all proposed signage complies with the zoning ordinance. And with that, I refer to Dave McAnally at this time to talk about the fire marshal's review. Dave?
Hi, thank you. I know that this is a different location compared to the other one. And the only question I initially had brought up prior to it being put in was the propane distribution that was located on-site at Menards. But that is a cylinder distribution and not a bulk distribution, so it falls within the guidelines of NFPA requirements. And plus, the distance is measured outside of the requirement, so it's not a, it's not a hazard and no longer falls within an exclusion area. So where they have the tent is fine. Some of the, some of the the parking blocks that they have out there, the islands will also shield that tent for some of the 10-foot restriction requirements that they need to have. So they've probably, like Matt said, they've put it in the best location possible. Other than that, the fire department's fine with their submittal.
And with that, be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you both again. Good job and a nice, nice job on the visual. Director Best, good job. Planning Commission discussion. So this is a similar application, but a different site. So questions or comments from the commission? I already know you have some, so Commissioner Boynton, we'll start with you.
Okay. Just want to let Director Best know, just for information, I know this is new and everything else. I didn't, I didn't get the shared screen. I was able to follow you because I do have the diagram right here, so I was good. But just to let you know, I guess for the moderators and for the other administrators, I just want to let you know that that didn't happen on my end. So aside from that small housekeeping thing, for Mr. Tapper, looking at the diagrams and everything else, just to be real quick in there with it, the diagram for the tent and the fire extinguishers. I know usually when we have our conversations, you know me, I like to have as many as I can, within reason, of course. You know, I like, I like, I like chiding you and having a good time with it. Now, you've been doing this for the past nine years. We do have a good time. However, I only see two fire extinguishers here, and usually when you have them, you put them near or adjacent to the exits. What I have here, it's a little light, but just on that, just to get to the point, I'd like to just on that, just to get to the point, I'd like to see at least one more fire extinguisher, if not two. In, in, with that regard, and the next point that I would like to bring up, Madam Chair, is that on the certificate of liability insurance, down in the, just above where it says certificate holder, where it names the other insureds. I see that you have Menards, but the township is not listed as it is on the other certificate of liability insurance. And just hoping that that just might be a clerical oversight. That's it.
Okay. Other questions or comments from Commissioner before I ask Mr. Tapper to respond? Anyone else? Mr. Tapper, do you have any response for Commissioner Boynton's questions?
Sure do. I got all his answers.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Number one, number one, that diagram shows two fire extinguishers. Those are the two 10-pound powder one. We will have in the middle, uh, the water fire extinguisher. So that tent will have three fire extinguishers. We have three fire extinguishers in all our tents. That'll be the same for the other location. So you will see three fire extinguishers.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the insurance was a missed site on my part when it came from our company. I will definitely make a call first thing in the morning. I will get the Van Buren Township added and I will email, and I'll email that over to Matt tomorrow.
Outstanding. Thank you so much, my friend.
Not a problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Boynton. Other questions or comments from the Commission? Hearing none. Do we have any public comments? Director Powers?
I see no hands raised or additional chat items. Mr. Tapper did add a comment previously that I believe he addressed in the first round of discussion that our state inspection will be on Monday, June 22nd, starting at 11 a.m. at Menards, then on to Lakewood. So that, he did send that to the group.
Okay, sounds great. If there are no other questions or comments for the applicant or for staff, is ready to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I do have a question. The the previous request looks like it was through July 5th and this one is only through July 4th. Is that intentional, sir?
Uh, no, actually July, July 4th will be our last day of sales. The 5th we start cleaning up. So July 4th will be our last day.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Kelly?
I'd moved to grant Phantom Fireworks a temporary land use permit at 10010 Belleville Road. Based on the analysis and subject to the conditions stated in the Van Buren Staff Letter dated May 11th, 2020. And the Van Buren Fire Department Letter dated May 21st, 2020. With the additional items that there will be a correction to the minor oversight regarding insurance. And the notation that all the sites will contain three fire extinguishers.
All right, motion is there support?
I'll support that.
Thanks, Commissioner Bud. Motion Commissioner, Commissioner Bud and Ms. Harmon, it is a roll call vote, please.
Medina Atkinson?
Yes.
Sherry Bud?
Yes.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Franzoy?
Yes.
Donald Boynton?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes. So the motion is carried and Mr. Tapper, we wish you a very safe season and good luck on the new site. And we look forward to hearing how that goes for you.
Great. Thank you very much. Everyone be safe.
Thanks, you too.
Yeah, thank you.
We're in, I don't, we are moving to item three under new business and that is the Active Arrow Group Administrative Site Plan Update. Staff will provide an update on an administratively approved 23,597 square foot local park and building and related site improvements. The location is 48155 F Street. Property is located on the south side of F Street, on the west side of Aggerty Road in Willow Run Airport. And the presentation will be done by Director Powers, please.
Thank you. I did note that Commissioner Boynton said the screen share was not working. So I am trying to use a screen share. I'm hoping it works for at least some of you. Either way, I'll be talking about things that are still pertinent when I reference this image. So hopefully some, some of you can take a look at this and then for next time, we can see if there are issues with the screen sharing. So I'll, I'll jump right into this. I'd like to first describe this project. If you can see the image on the screen or if you can't, I'll still describe it. This is the area of the township that the project is proposed in. Projects in the Willow Run Airport are unique and I'll explain why shortly. But the project summary is that this is a airplane parts and storage building. A little bit under 23,600 square feet with about 6,400 square feet, give or take, to give or take of office area. About 17,200 square feet, give or take of warehouse area. There will be sanitary and water serving this site, public sanitary and water. And three working shifts, up to 10 people per shift and minor landscaping. If you look at the image, there is some context here. The Active Arrow headquarters is near the site. That's at 2068 E Street. The site is of course in the airport, which is just for a little bit more context, west of Beck Road. Past the end of Tyler Road in the street network within the airport. I'm gonna leave this image up and you can refer to it and look at the building layout of the site plan and the architectural design of the building. But I'll go through some more details of the review process and the details of this site plan. Four projects in our airport zoning district, which by and large covers the Willow Run Airport. Per Section 3.118D of the Van Buren Township Zoning Ordinance. We administratively review projects in the airport and look at aspects of area, height and placement, parking, loading, access management, environmental performance standards, screening and landscaping. We also verify that the use complies with the zoning district. In this case, this use is consistent with the definition that is assembly and fabrication plants which use an airport taxiway. That's a little bit of a paraphrase, but it's acceptable manufacturing use and storage use within the airport zoning district context. When the current zoning ordinance was adopted, there was a agreement by the township based on discussions from the Public Services Department that the properties in the airport would be reviewed administratively. It's ultimately the Wayne County Airport Authority that will have purview over the site plan. But staff will review the airport design administratively for compliance with some of those basic zoning benchmarks. And once our administrative approval is granted, we can update the planning commission as I'm doing now. And the Wayne County Airport Authority gives ultimate site approval. With their approval in hand, we do review and issue permits for the building. And that's an effort that involves the fire department and the, the building department. When we review these administrative plans, there are some formatting items that are included. There is a description of the land use. There are plans that are complete with scaling and different formatting items that you typically look for in a site plan. Schedule of parking needs. Traffic and pedestrian circulation design, landscaping if applicable. Listing of hazardous materials if there are any, office and staffing information and other information. The applicant in this case has provided all of the necessary information. We do look at, I'm gonna get into some of the details of some of the zoning items that I mentioned earlier. So with respect to area height and placement, this site is proposed well within the setback parameters that are required for the AP zoning district. And that includes a front yard setback of 100 feet, side yard setbacks of 50 feet, rear yard setbacks of 100 feet. And it's important to keep in mind that the setbacks in this case refer to setbacks from the public road network. So the setbacks that we're primarily concerned with are those from Beck Road in this case and some of the other major roads. We need these expansive setbacks due to the nature of the use on the airport property. But within the airport, there's a lot of flexibility with how the buildings relate to the street network that's inside of the airport. So the setbacks are met. The parking is another issue based on the mix of warehousing and office floor area. There is adequate parking on the site. Total of 32 parking spaces are proposed. There are nine, nine and a half by 18-foot parking spaces with 24-foot parking aisles. Drainage design is part of the site plan consideration. And in this case, the drainage will be forwarded to the Wayne County Department of Environment Permit Office for their review and approval, should it be required. With driveways and access management, this is a, again, a private road network. So we don't scrutinize this too heavily. You'll note that there are two driveways spaced a little over 200 feet apart. The access circulation is also shown on the site plan. There are spaces for rear loading and maneuvering. There is parking lot landscaping, including seven trees, 20 shrubs and 112 perennial plants. The environmental standards as applicable are met. And screening landscaping and other requirements with respect to HVAC equipment and some of the other things that you normally see on an industrial site plan review are not as applicable here unless you are directly abutting one of the major public roads on the perimeter of the airport. And that is not the case here. So moving ahead, again, the next steps will involve Wayne County Airport Authority approval, building permit review on our end. At this time, I've been closely communicating with the applicant's representative, Dave Sullivan of Active Arrow Group. He was not able to make the meeting tonight, but it's typical with these administrative updates that staff will just provide those updates. There will be a delay on this project. I, I have to say very generally that they, they are reassessing conditions with this and other development. As you can imagine, the current coronavirus situation affects timing and, and supply chains and things of those natures. So, and revenue streams. But all I know is that this will be not built immediately. And there will be some changes to the original construction schedule, which had construction beginning in May. But the administrative approval will be good for a year and, and with flexibility that's required, given the circumstances. We are comfortable recommending the administrative approval. And the letter and the site plan are included in your packet based on that recommendation. So I'm glad to take questions. There may be some questions you have that I'll have to get back to you with at the next opportunity. Just to make sure I get, get the facts right from the applicant. But that is, that is the Active Arrow project. I will also just mention for a similar case off the screen here to the Southwest, Coleta Air had a office expansion in addition, and I believe it was 2018. And there was a similar administrative review process used for that. So the airport sites are unique, but we want to just keep the planning commission up to date on what is, what is happening within the airport. So again, any questions for me or the applicant, feel free to state those and I will stop my screen share and get out of the way here. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I could just add one quick, and Dan, you might want to jump in on this too. This is an, actually a significant development for the airport. Active Arrow was one of the regional part suppliers and nationally is starting to become a player in the parts, airplane part distribution and sales. They also are preparing to, if I remember correctly, Dan, to transition their entire fleet to new planes. Is that correct?
I'll, I'll have to check on that, but I think that's right.
When we met with, I believe when we met with Active Arrow, they're changing over their planes so that they can expand their sales area. So they're going from their older planes to a newer set of planes, which will allow them to really start to increase their business. So this is a, this is a look to the future for Willow Run being a hub for airplane-based business and, and cargos, cargo and part distribution. So this is actually a really great development for the airport. I just wanted to make sure we, it's a very strong economic development piece.
Great. Thank you both. Good presentation and good information to have. Questions or comments from the Commission? For either staff? Anyone?
Do the chair?
Sure, Commissioner.
A question for the staff. Does Active Arrow and Coleta Airlines, I heard something that it's similar. Like Active Arrow has this new business venture. It's kind of in line with Coleta, what Coleta did back in 2018. Are they doing this together? Are they related?
I, I don't think they're related. I think it's different business models. I believe it's USA Jet is affiliated with Active Arrow. But in terms of the charter operations that Coleta Air is involved in, I think that's a separate item. Director Best, you might know some of the, some more of the history.
The thing that they did in, the thing that they did in 2018 was they went through the administrative planning process, which was brand new to us with Coleta. The airport in Ron Acres, before he left, worked out a process to do this administrative approval to speed up and really encourage development at the airport. And so the Coleta Office Building went through that process that Active Arrow just completed with Dan Power, Director Power. So they're, they have, where Active Arrow does chart, some charters, very limited charters. Coleta moves people, Active Arrow moves parts and cargo. And, and they're, they're very, both very good at what they do. So.
Thank you. That answers that. I thought they were both doing parts distribution.
As far as I, as far as I'm aware, Coleta's mostly doing charter and repair. Arrow does parts and cargo. That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other Commissioner questions, comments? Anyone? All right. If you can just keep us updated, once they get on their full approval and their construction plan, we'll look forward to hearing more about it. We are in the general discussion part of the agenda this evening. And Director Best, I understand you have an item under general discussion to report or notify us about?
Yes, as, as we come to the end of the first planning commission Zoom meeting, I wanted to let you kind of be aware that this probably won't be the last one. With COVID-19 and the, the township's COVID preparedness and response plan that's being developed. Until the, until the the governor, at least until June 30th, which is when the governor's executive order expires for allowing virtual meetings to take place for commissions and boards. We will be probably meeting in a virtual state. And what's, some of the items that are coming up will require us to do public, potentially public hearings and, and a lot more public comment. So while today's meeting was more action items for the board and applicants, the, the following two meetings are going to probably be a little bit more interactive with the public. And we've, Dan Power has worked, Director Powers worked very closely with other communities who have already gone through the growing pains with public hearings and public comment on these Zoom meetings. And we're making sure and ensuring that the public gets every opportunity to participate, hear of the projects, have their comments heard and make sure that their input is taken in by the planning commission through the next, at least the next two meetings. Hopefully it's just the next two meetings. So I just wanted to make sure, and Dan, did you want to add anything to that? So I just wanted to make sure, and Dan, did you want to add anything to that?
I think that sums it up well, we, we, we have to be able to do what we do as a planning commission and keep the process of development and ordinance review going. But we also want to make sure that we're being as equitable and transparent and engaging as we can with the public process, so that can be. The tricky balance, but we have a lot of good input from other communities and our own planning consultant about ways to approach that. So we're, we're gonna have, as Matt, Matthew, Director Best said, we're gonna have more on the next two agendas and. Probably more public input involved with those, so we'll just keep, keep track of how we're doing this and make sure that we do it well.
And rest assured that the staff will be providing, when the time comes for our method for public, to doing a public hearing and public comment, we will all sit down again as we did before. And individually, kind of in small groups, work with you guys to make sure you understand the process of how we're doing it. How it will work tech, with the technology, we'll make sure Commissioner, Commissioner Boynton's screen share is working. We'll, we'll double-check all these things and make sure that when we do the public hearing. Or a public comment period with a large group, because we potentially could have a large group at, at some of these items, that we're doing it the right way for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both gentlemen, thanks to all the staff, I mean, the trainings went well, you've organized us, you've kept us well-informed, and you really shepherded us through. What could have been a very difficult process, and you've made it look like we know what we're doing, so I appreciate. Anything else under general discussion from the Commissioners? From anyone else on the call? General discussion items? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Mr. Bud, I'll take support, Commissioner Boynton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we're adjourned, thank you very much, good job.
Thank you.
Good night, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Great job, everybody.